Okay, so good evening and welcome to the Village of Tocco Planning Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 5th. Nancy, please take attendance.
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
Present.
Commissioner Barra, not here. Commissioner Castellanos.
Present.
Commissioner Hight, Norde.
Present.
Yes, and Chairman Leo.
This evening, we have the approval of the meeting minutes. Of 56 Underhill, which is site plan for exterior basement stairs and repairs on porch. We have 160 Dante Avenue for rooftop terrace. And then Columbus Avenue, site plan to asphalt parking area. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minute.
No move.
Held on June 16th. Have a second, please.
Second. I second the minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You got that? Okay, so at this point, can we? Dante Avenue. Present.
Yes, good evening Chair members of the board. I'm Lewis Campana, the architect for the applicant John Omar of 160 Dante Avenue. Before you this evening for site plan review is an existing legally non-conforming property. It is a three-family dwelling, multifamily dwelling, within the A5 zone, which in fact is a single-family zone in the village. What we're proposing to do is remove an existing shed roof off of, or from, an existing first-floor footprint at the back of the house to allow the second floor access to the rear yard and also for life-safety purposes for egress. The terrace, or I should say, once the roof is removed, the new terrace will be constructed out of new framing. It'll have a waterproofing membrane and the decking surface and rails will consist of Trex components. The reason why we're doing this currently is because the second-floor residents do not have the ability to readily access the rear yard. Currently, they have to walk down three flights of stairs to the front of the house and then all the way around the house and then back up to the rear yard. So, we're doing this for function and circulation purposes, but also for proper egress and life-safety.
Can you show everyone can look at the project?
Yes, certainly. So, I'm going to show you a photograph first of the rear of the house, so you can see what it looks like. So, this is the second floor of the house right here. Okay? And there's about a 17-foot differential from the front of the house to the back of the house. So, there's a tremendous amount of stairs that lead up to this rear yard. Currently and in the past, this backyard has been unkept because it is basically inaccessible and very difficult to get to for the residents. This is the terrace, I'm sorry, this is the shed roof that we will be removing right here. Okay, this portion of it here will remain. And the rails will basically run around this perimeter. So, everything is on top of existing footprint. There are steps that you don't see right now, but there's steps that wrap around and come up right here from the side yard. I'm going to go to the site plan, so you can see.
Before you leave this photograph, it looks like that the, based on the window location, that the shed roof is above your existing second-floor floor.
That is correct, yes.
Are you lowering this roof?
So, this pitch will come off, the new, I'm sorry, the existing framing for the first-floor ceiling will also be removed, reframed. And then, we're going to be applying a waterproofing surface.
But you're going to lower it, correct?
It's going to be lowered, correct. But there will be a curb, there will be a curb underneath the new door that will have to be stepped over to gain access to the deck.
Right, no question, but based on this photo, it looks like you have about six feet from the top of the roof to the underside of the eve, approximately?
Roughly, yes. We're able to fit a six-foot-eight door, a typical-sized door.
Okay, to do that, you're going to have to lower this roof, that's all, I'm sorry.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and does enough, will not affect the first-floor interior ceiling?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and there's enough space in between the shed roof and the underside of the first-floor ceiling to allow you to lower this roof level?
I can show you a section, so you can see what that, what that looks like.
Your drawing section? Yeah.
Yeah. So, here is, I'll just go to the section, or the rear elevation, so you can see what it looks like. So, this is the rear elevation that you saw previously, and this is the new terrace that will be there right now. There's that sort of five-inch curve that would have to be stepped over to get onto the deck. The reason why we're doing that is to prevent water infiltration through the sill. So, we want that sill to be about, right.
It looks like, go up one page, to A400?
Yes.
Yeah, it just looks like where your earth line is in relationship to the windows, it just seems lowered, that's all.
Yeah, no, it certainly is. Here.
It seems lower than the photograph, sorry.
Okay. And here, you can see the construction. So, this is the original, I guess if you want to say, for lack of better terms, the original ceiling of the second, first floor. And we're slightly dropped here, slightly. But there's over an eight-foot ceiling here on the first floor. So, it would be complying with the minimum habitable height.
Okay, just the photograph throwing me off a little bit, that's all.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that photograph for a second?
Sure, hold on a second.
Maybe it's the way the angle is taken.
Right.
Do you have a photograph on the side, any chance?
Let me see, it's pretty tough, but I do.
Yeah, but I guess next time you come in front of us, you can share it with me.
It's, I'm looking, I'm just looking for it right now. So, this is the closest that we can get because of the tight, the tight setback. But these are the steps that come along the side of the house, and this is the side of the retaining walls. You actually walk around this concrete mass to get up to that level. This is the roof that we were looking at previously.
Want to see if you have something in relationship to the grade?
Yeah. We were, we were in front of the zoning board last week. Zoning board received the project well without reservation, and we also received the opposition for the application thus far.
But you're actually going to have to go one more meeting, correct?
That's correct, yes. And then back to you guys.
Okay, so let's go, let's look at the plans again and just walk through the plans.
Okay, so. All right, you want to see the floor plan?
Yeah, yes.
So, here is the, here's the first floor, okay? This is, I said, I'm sorry, this is the second floor, and this is the roof that's over the existing first floor. And this is what we're proposing to do with it here. So, we have this railing decking, and then a step that goes down to the rear yard.
Okay.
And here's the existing site plan, or the proposed site plan, I should say. Those are the photo that you were seeing previously. We were standing on this landing, looking down this way.
Be interesting to see if you were, if you were looking north from that landing.
Looking, looking this way?
Eight north. Okay.
Okay.
All right, if you could just go through the elevation one more time, if you don't mind.
Sure, no problem. So, this is the front of the house, so there's nothing changing on the front of the house here. This is the side of the house which faces north, okay? Here is an exit from that first floor that goes down and around. The second floor, there's a set of steps that comes all the way down to the front entrance, which is around the corner here, which you can see right here. Okay? And then, we have the elevation facing south, where you can see the differential in grade, how drastic that is, and then again, the deck, the roof terrace. Any questions?
I think it's a nice little addition. Does anyone from the board have any questions?
None here. You have, when it comes back to zoning, we'll take care of them.
Laszlo, any questions? Nancy?
No.
Where were those, those steps again, from the, that go all the way up? Are these those steps that you were talking about that go all the way up and then come all the way around?
I'll take you to the, to the floor plan, so you can see that. So, here, the existing, the existing plans. I may have to actually switch these two, but this is the second-floor plan.
Okay.
Okay. Am I, am I correct there? I'm sorry, this is the, this is the first floor, this is the second floor. So, the tenants have to walk all the way down these steps currently and out to the front yard, which is basically right here. So, it goes all the way up to the side of the house. In the site plan, you can see that, once they exit, they would have to, because there's no access here along the northern side, they'd have to traverse around the house and then up these stairs and then back up.
Okay, I got it.
Right.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
None here.
All right, so, Mr. Campana, I guess you're going to zoning. Once you get zoning board approval, come back to us and we'll review the project further.
All right, great. I'll make sure to have that photograph looking north from that south side.
Okay.
So, you can review it. Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, we're not opening up the public hearing tonight.
No, not tonight.
That's right, thank you.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Can we do 56 Underhill, please?
Hi. I, I, I'm not prepared to share my screen. Do you need me to get prepared to do that?
Ideally, just so we can show the, the public what you were doing. Is there any, any way you can figure it out, will we move the next applicant, or?
Sure, sure, I just need to find the, the documents and I, I, I guess I could figure out how to do it. This is my first meeting, I'm sorry.
Of course. Do you have, is there a digital copy? Do you have a digital copy?
I have a PDF of it, yes, I do.
The way you would do it is pull up the PDF and show it on your screen, and then I believe at the bottom of your Zoom, there's Share Your Screen. And that, we can share your screen. So, you want to find your PDF and then we'll come back to you, is that okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so then we'll shift to 397 Columbus. Garrett, okay, you're muted then, okay, great. Hi, guys.
Good evening, board members. My name is Patrick Costello. I'm here with my wife, Susan Lukowicz. We're the owners of 397 LLC, which is located at 397 Columbus Avenue. We're in the same situation with respect to, we don't have anything that we could load up onto the computer. The only thing we submitted was a survey of the property. What we're looking to do is to asphalt the current gravel parking lot, which consists of eight spaces.
Okay.
Which is adjacent to the apartment building.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's something that would be needed for us to do.
No, I mean, again, I'd just ideally like to have the public see what we're doing, and I know it's fairly new. Do you happen to have a survey with you? You could just put against your screen, so we can actually see what we're talking about.
Yes.
So, I wanted to, let's see if that'll work. Yeah, okay, that'll work, yeah, just bring it closer. All right, so particularly the yellow area, that's what you're looking to asphalt, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Look higher, higher, and back. That, perfect, perfect, okay. So, the, the yellow area is currently a gravel parking lot, and you're looking to apply asphalt to it and then just keep the same number of parking spaces, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. You can take that down, that's fine, thank you. Okay, so, I don't see any, I don't see any issues with that, right? The only concern I have is because you are applying asphalt to the surface, it now becomes impervious material. So, what we need to do at this point is you need to show a new drywall and how you're going to handle the runoff from the parking lot. You can't just dump it into the street, it's got to be dealt with properly. So, you're going to have to prepare, you know, have to have an engineer or someone prepare a drywall calculation for you and present it to the building department to approve.
I'm so sorry, presented, I didn't hear that last, presented to the building department?
Well, yeah, just submit it to the building.
Submit it to the building department.
Yeah, we, again, we have no, I personally do not have any objection to you asphalting the parking lot, the runoff with, and that's a building department issue. Is anyone, have any questions? Laszlo, Nancy, Ray?
No, I'm good. Probably on the train, so.
Okay, all right. So, at this point, they make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Show move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is anyone here to speak on this application? Gary, is anyone else in the room?
No one else is here.
Okay, so, since no one is here to speak on this application, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second, please?
Show move.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so at this point, I read a resolution, if I can find it now, hold on.
I got the resolution, Antonio.
You got it for 56, we're doing 397, right?
I have it.
You want to read that 397 as well?
I have the 56 Underhill.
I will do 397.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to get the other one? I'm sorry, let me get it up, hold on, I'm here.
No, Ray, I'll read. Ray, I'll read this one, you do the other one.
Yeah, okay, let me get the other one up here.
I'm going to mute everyone. Hey, Antonio, while you read, I'm going to mute everyone, so, because I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Okay, so the Village of 56 Main Street, Tocco, New York, Planning Board Resolution. Applicant owner, 397 Columbus Avenue LLC. Location of the project is 397 Columbus Avenue, Tocco, New York. Section 46, Block 5, Block 4. Description of project is asphalt current gravel parking lot. SECRE resolution pursuant to the regulations of SECRE, this board finds that, one, action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of the SECRE and is implementing regulations. Two, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. Three, that the action taken herein is, shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Nancy, want to take a roll?
Commissioner Narenberg.
For.
Commissioner Castellanos.
For.
Commissioner Hight, Norde.
For.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. At this point, I'd like to reach following resolution. The following is the resolution of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco, New York. The applicant seeking to asphalt existing gravel parking area. This board has met the satisfied, met and satisfied the standards of 7-1 of the zoning code and therefore is, the application is approved. The approval is however conditioned on the building department's approval of appropriate drainage for the site including, but not limited to drywells. It should be noted that the applicant seeks approval for a fence on the property. The fence is not in the purview of this board and the application for the fence must be made directly to the building department. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representation shall, shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Meeting date, September 15, 2020, and it's approved. Have a second, please?
Second, second.
Nancy, I'll take the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
For.
Commissioner Castellanos.
For.
Commissioner Hight, Norde.
For.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. Congratulations, good luck, and have a great day. Bye-bye. Okay, so we're back to 56 Underhill.
Hi. Okay, let's do it.
Do it, let's go. Let's see if we can do this now.
Okay, it's giving me options.
All right. That's awesome.
Yeah, hopefully. Does this work?
No, not yet. What are your?
Sorry, it's giving me options of, you know, iPhone or whatever, but it's, it's, when I select the computer screen, it's not actually showing it.
Is there an option for Share Your Screen?
Yeah, no, I click on that and it brings me to a new screen, which should, oh, here we go, wait, maybe this is going to work now?
Oh, yeah, there you, oh.
There it is.
Thanks.
So sorry, so sorry.
Oh, don't worry.
Hi, everybody, I'm Terry DiPaolo, thank you for your patience. So, I recently purchased 56 Underhill Street, and I'm really excited about it. I think she's a beautiful house in hiding right now. The, the plans in front of you today are to basically replace the existing front deck, which we will also be using some Trex for. And a nice white railing, which will be brought up to code, because it is not presently. And then, I can take you to the back area, the back of the house. There is a one-story that's part of the first-floor apartment here, no work is being done. This is an entryway into that back of the first-story apartment. And the, the stone, it's a concrete block that's there now, has pulled away from the wall and the railing is well below what you would require by today's building codes. So, our plan is, is to replace this and, in its existing format, but just bring it up to code and make it nice and functional and actually have it attached to the house, right? And then, over here, is currently a Bilco door, if you can even call it that. It's, it's like five layers of plywood, it's a disaster. And so, there are some steps there currently, but they would not be suitable for use on a regular basis. I'd like to put a washer and dryer here in the basement for use by the tenants. And so, to give them access, I'm going to, I'm planning on creating, you know, a set of steps here down and up and a door to the laundry room, and we would then wall off in the basement the boiler and electric meters and things like that, which are over on this side, which in order to get to, you would go through, through the main house and this staircase, which is not being touched. The reason for the back doors instead of this staircase is because I would not want to carry a laundry basket up and down these stairs. They're far too narrow and way too steep. So, this is a much more usable egress for the laundry room. And I, I think that's it. Is there anything I can scroll through the rest of the plans, if you like?
No, your application is primarily that rear step.
Yeah.
So, all right, is anyone, I don't have any questions, I, I think this is a nice solution. Anyone from the board have any questions?
None here.
Antonio, just, just to clarify something, the only thing that this board is looking at is the basement entry stairs with the roof.
That's correct.
That's the only thing before the planning board, just so the other board members know.
Correct.
Yeah.
Antonio.
Yes.
I just happened to be in that, in that basement today, because they called for an inspection for an apartment upstairs. And she is correct about those stairs that go down there now, they're lucky, they're two feet. They're very small, they're pre-existing, there's no way that anybody's going to go in in that area with a, with a laundry room.
Mike, these are very old homes, I have one of those old homes as well. Yes, I'm very familiar with some of those conditions, so. That's why I think this is a very good solution for what is being done here. I, you know, I don't find, I don't see any issues with this.
Yep.
Thank you for your input.
No question about it, I just think that maybe they're going to need, they might need a door. I mean, I defer to build between that wall, you know, put a door there so they can use their back exits, God forbid, you know, that boiler room. Getting in and out of that boiler room with just those set of stairs.
As an egress out to the backyard, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's something to consider.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, anyone from the board have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, so at this point, make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Nancy, please take a roll. Nancy?
Okay, yes, sorry, Commissioner Narenberg.
For.
Commissioner Castellanos.
For.
Commissioner Hight, Norde.
For.
And Commissioner Leo.
In favor. Is anyone here to speak on this application? Gary, is anyone in the room?
Nobody's in the room.
All right, so at this point, I make a motion to close the.
Show move.
Right? Nancy, again, please take a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
For.
Commissioner Castellanos.
For.
Commissioner Hight, Norde.
For.
And Chairman Leo.
Favor. Ray, can you read the resolution? Mr. Raymond?
Ray, you're up.
Let me read.
Yes.
Okay, secret resolution pursuant to the regulations of SECRE, this board finds that.
Ray, read from the top.
Oh, I'm sorry. Applicant owner, Mogus Equities Incorporated, 56 Underhill Street, Tocco, Section 29, Block 6, What, 8. Description of project, new exterior basement entry stairs with a roof. SECRE resolution pursuant to the regulations of SECRE, this board finds the action herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and is implementing regulations. This board is in possession of information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. That the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse of impact on the environment and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted to this action.
I second that. Nancy, please take a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg.
For.
Commissioner Castellanos. Commissioner Hight, Norde.
For.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. And Ray, read the second page? Ray, read the second page? Ray, can you read page two? I think it's frozen.
Let me read the rest?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, got you. The following is a resolution decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco, New York. Applicant is seeking to construct new exterior entry stairs with a roof. This board finds the applicant has met and satisfied the standards of 7.1. the standards of 7.1 of the zoning code and therefore the application is approved. It should be noted that the applicant also seeks approval for repair of the front porch, new laundry room, replacement of rear yard concrete steps and to removal of the existing stone veneer facade. These items are not in the purview of this board and applications to the building department must be made directly to the department. Every representation of the applicant made in this, in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. September 15, 2020.
I second this resolution. You take a role, please?
Yes, Commissioner Narenberg?
For.
Commissioner Castellanos?
For.
Commissioner Hite Norde?
For.
And Chairman Leo?
In favor. Congratulations, I wish you luck with this home. A pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, thank you all, have a great night.
Bye-bye. All right, since I believe we have no further business, guys, right, Gary?
No one else is here, so there should be no further business.
No further business. At this point, close this meeting. I remind everyone, today is election day in Tocco, so please, if you haven't, well, all right, guys, have a great evening, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, all.